You're tuned into Inside Lowell, Inside Lowell Podcast, brought to you in part by Washington Savings Bank, serving the greater Lowell community for over 130 years. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank. Reverie 73, Lowell's number one cannabis shop. Elevate your cannabis experience at Reverie 73. Hafner's, heating and cooling homes and businesses for nearly a century. Hafner's, it kicks. And by Boston North Company, restaurant and retail solutions for your business. That's Boston North. And now, time for another Inside Lowell Podcast. Inside Lowell, if Lowell is your home, this is your place.
Welcome back again, everybody, to Inside Lowell, another Inside Lowell Podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos. About to introduce you to a new candidate for Lowell City Council, new candidate. Not exactly a new face, however, a familiar face to folks in the Lowell area. We'll get to him in a quick second. Just want to thank all of our sponsors. You heard Danielle's voice introducing them for you, our main sponsors. Also, I want to thank all of our sponsors here at Inside Lowell. Too many of them to list. We'd need a separate podcast just to do that. But I want to thank them for helping support local media and making this podcast, all of our podcasts, and all of Inside Lowell, for that matter, possible. So, thank you to all of you out there. Thank you to all of you who are watching this or listening to it across our various formats as well. Hundred thousand strong to this day. So, we're growing. There's a lot more of us today than there were when we launched back on October 24th. So, thank you very much for making all of this possible. Want to turn my attention now to my guest here on this podcast. He is a candidate for Lowell City Council in District Eight, the Upper Highlands Neighborhood District, Johnny Dakota. Good morning, Johnny, and welcome. How are you?
Teddy, appreciate the invite.
Great to have you here.
Doing well.
We've been working on this for a while now, it seems, to get you in here.
Yeah, yeah, we're busy. We're knocking on doors and trying to get the word out. People, you know, a lot of people have got a lot of questions, you know, and just, you know what? I've been in the Highlands for over 30 years, and you're thinking, oh, everybody? You don't know. I was knocking on doors. I got invited for lemonade. That was nice.
Nice. Was the lemonade good?
It was good. Fifteen minutes with a candidate. She answered, "Go ahead," I said, "I'll see you later." It's perfect. It's been fun. It's actually been fun. I wanted the campaign to be fun. I didn't want it to be work. And that was the whole reason. But, you know, people ask me, you know, "What's the matter with you? Why are you doing this? You're going to retire soon." I said, "Well, listen." I was at this restaurant called the Athenian Corner, and the bartender, who should go nameless, gave me a few too many. I didn't drive. And next day, I'm pulling papers. So, I blame the Athenian Corner for my entry into this.
But a lot of the city's problems and people's personal problems have started at that place. A lot to get to, just in what you just said. First, I always ask everybody, "Who are you? Why are you running for city council?" You answered some of it, and you've lived in the Highlands for 30 years.
Yeah, I've been in the Highlands for three years. Actually, was born and raised in Senneville for 18 years. Went to UMass Lowell, picked up a business degree and a computer science degree. I don't know what the computer science degree is for. I can't even turn on a computer these days. But I did that and been living in the Highlands on Viola Street. Great, great part of the Highlands. And, you know, it's... I've always been part of the political landscape, I would say, of the cities for a long time. Helped out Danny Tenza with his campaigns. Ran Jimmy Larry's campaign for state rep, which came on the losing end of that. But had fun with that and learned a lot. And so, a lot of people in the years have asked me, you know, "You'd be a really good fit for the city council." And, you know, then I started a couple of businesses, had a couple of bars that I owned. And, you know, then the family comes, and it's just, I said, "It's just not the right time." Because personally, Teddy, I don't think being a city councillor is a 20-hour-a-week job. I really don't, you know? For the people that can do it, they can do it well, kudos to them. But I think it's a lot of work. And I wanted to give it its due respect. I really did. So, it was the right time. It really was the right time. I'll be retiring from the Lowell Public Schools next year. And hopefully, if I am elected, I'll be able to help the citizens of constituents of the Upper Highlands, District Eight.
So, you mentioned you work for the Lowell Public Schools. How long have you worked there? And you're kind of, you're in charge of a whole bunch of things, but most well-known, you're the transportation coordinator, making sure the buses, literally, unlike Mussolini, you're the guy who makes the buses really run on time.
It, I've had a couple of jobs there. Actually, if you think about it, because, you know, there's been a lot of shaking and moving at the Lowell Public Schools. So, I first started out as the Transportation Director there in 2005. And then, they decided to combine the Family Resource Center and the Transportation together. So, I was the Family Resource Center coordinator for a few years. Actually, then left, went to Worcester for a couple of months, and had learned a lot there under the person who was the first Transportation Director, John Hennessy. So, I learned a lot. He was a very knowledgeable man. And then, a chance opened up again in Lowell, because Worcester is like driving the Indianapolis 500. So, I said, "I think I've had enough of this." So, it opened up again, and obviously, you know, after the pandemic's been very difficult with getting bus drivers. And this last year and this year are gonna, they're wearing on me. So, it's going to be a young man's game, I think, after this. You know, getting up at five o'clock in the morning, you know, and when five drivers call in sick the night before that morning, and then 11 o'clock at night, when people start calling in, and you're trying to put together routes and this and that. So, it wears on you a little bit, you know? And so, when this all kind of came to fruition, I said, "You know what? It's time to move on. I'll have 19 years in there, and I'll be 62 years old."
Retirement can't come soon enough, right?
Yeah, I'd have to say you're right.
April of 2024.
That's the plan right now.
Okay. Even if elected, that date doesn't change?
I can't say 100% because if we do bring in somebody new, you do have that summer school factor, which is kind of a little bit messy at times. So, it would not, you know, surprise me to stay on to the end of June, maybe, if I had to. But if we had somebody who was a quick learner, understood the city Lowell, that's the biggest thing, is, you know, if you don't know the cities and streets of Lowell, it's just as bad as Boston to learn the roots.
Where does one find an expert on transportation and buses?
Should I cough now?
We should, let's clarify it right now. You are 100% an expert on school transportation and buses.
The day that will go down in the city council.
The throat clear heard around the world. You also have served on the City of Lowell License Commission for, oh, God, what, you're close to a decade now?
I'll be approaching my 11th year now as the chairman. So, I enjoy that immensely. I really do. Because being a previous bar owner, you know, I can tell when somebody's trying to give me the, you know, the runaround, when I know, "Listen, just tell me the truth, and the repercussions won't be as bad," you know? But we have a great board, and I like doing it. Something that I look forward to. We meet twice a month.
Do you get to keep doing that if you're elected to the council? Or do you have to give that up as well?
So, I called the Ethics Commission on that, because somebody brought that to my attention. And I said, "Well, I don't think I'm going to be able to do this then," right? And so, I called up the Ethics. She goes, "Was, are you elected or appointed?" I said, "Appointed by the city manager." She goes, "So, you work directly for the Lowell City Council?" I said, "No, we don't. In fact, the Division, the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission is our governing body. We, Lowell City Council has no authority over the Lowell License Board, which is one of the few boards that they don't. So, there is no conflict of interest." But once again, if I am elected, and, you know, the amount of work that I have, if it's something that just, I probably wouldn't. But if it does, I'll stay on. But like I said, I just wanted to make sure there was no conflict of interest. But being that it made sense when she said, "Yeah, it's under the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission." So, fine.
So, you're no stranger to having to make some tough decisions, controversial decisions. The License Commission, from time to time, comes into the public spotlight. So, let's start with a potential controversial decision. Now, you're not elected yet, but the current Lowell City Council is going to have to, and we're, by the way, for anyone watching, we're filming this on Monday, August 7th, but we're probably not going to air it till afterwards. You, the City Council will take, will discuss ADUs again at their August 8th meeting. I believe, unless something really bizarre happens, that they'll have to send that out for another public hearing to give it some more time. So, but at some point, over the next two weeks, the Lowell City Council will vote whether to approve ADUs with some type of ordinance, amendments attached to it. As you're looking at this right now, if you were sitting on that city council, how would you vote?
No.
No, 100% no?
As written, correct. I've tried to stay abreast of this whole situation. I watched the entire planning board meeting, which was, what, three weeks ago then? With all the speakers who spoke quite eloquently, I thought, and made some really good points. And I thought the planning board did an excellent job of putting together concerns that they had and should be brought forward to the city council. And obviously, they had Mr. Fashad as their speaker. And obviously, the city council heard them two, a week ago, a week ago or two weeks ago. You know, for two and a half hours, these speakers spoke. And I thought the concerns, which I believe were seven, I think needed to be addressed and spoken about. And, you know, either negotiated or, you know, yay, nay. And, you know, "How do we go from one bedroom? Now, we've got two bedrooms we're talking about. Now, we're talking about this and that." When I thought, "What, in the best interest of the city, bring it forward to a subcommittee with the concerns, the planning board, and the city council subcommittee, and speak about the concerns." But then, and I don't mean this in a disrespectful way to the other councillors, the present councillors, but after everything was said and done, we start throwing out all these amendments. And I'm going, "We're not going to be talking about the concerns that the planning board had brought forward, which they did a lot of work, had a lot of time and work put forth." And I just thought that was kind of a turn your notes up a little bit on it, you know? Let's talk about this, you know? And don't start throwing amendments out left and right about this and that and that.
But the amendments address some of the planning board concerns, correct?
Some of them, but not all of them. And I think all seven of those concerns have merit. And that was just my, that's what I'm thinking.
Do you need?
You know, it's funny, and I'm sorry, I was knocking on doors, and I didn't even think about doing my own street. So, I was knocking doors on my street, and she says, "You know, I know you've lived here for a long time." And the voter goes, "The constituent then said, 'I've lived here 50 years.'" She goes, "I want you to do me a favor." She goes, "I need to stand at Saturday, but I want you to take two steps back. I want you to turn around and look up the street." I did. There wasn't one spot for a car to park on Viola Street. And I was like, "Wow." She goes, "This neighborhood has changed so much that at times, you can't get two cars through on both sides, because there's cars on both sides." And I go, "It's really changed the neighborhood." So, if we're talking about Viola, you know, Viola, Janess, you know, all that area up there, and all the other ones, like, then you look at Gibson Street, you look at all the other. Not every, not every road is Livingston, where it's white, you know what I mean? So, are you changing the neighborhood and why people actually bought their homes there? I think you are, and I don't like that aspect of it.
So, the parking thing was one of the issues that Councillor Scott brought up. She had asked for a parking spot per bedroom for each of the ADUs.
In the driveway and one outside, right?
Correct. And that, that was one of the amendments that passed, I believe, if I didn't get it wrong.
Did the pass with the two bedrooms, or was it still the one bedroom? Because that's where I got confused. I'm going, "How did it go from one bedroom to two bedrooms and two cars?" Because I'm thinking, if you had a one bedroom, and you have a husband and a wife, or whoever, I can understand the two cars, and then we'll talk about it. But now, you have two bedrooms? I don't agree with the two-bedroom.
Would you, would you be a yes vote only if all seven of the planning board recommendations pass? Are there some that are negotiable to you? Because my concern, as I watch this, is I think there's a certain segment that doesn't want them under any circumstances, which is fine, that's a legitimate opinion to have. But they, I keep hearing this disclaimer, that I'm not against them, but we need to make changes. Well, is it all seven changes? Because what's acceptable to you may not be acceptable to somebody else. And that's, to me, that's how you basically bog something down, and you get 20 years of inactivity on it. Because we've been kind of discussing this on and off for 20 years. Do you need to see all seven of those amendments? Are there some lines in the sand in terms of what changes you would need to see made to vote yes?
I would definitely not do two bedrooms for any of you at all. Concerning the size of the lot, and if it met all the specifications, I don't think it needs to go in front of the planning board. I think the building inspections gives the okay, everything is there, let's go for it. I get it, you know? I don't think we need to go through the planning board for that special permit. That's one of the concerns that they have. So, if it meets all the requirements, I'm okay with that. But other than that, I think more discussion needs to be on some of these. I mean, the density of the, you know, are we, as a city, are we building, do we want to build like this? You know, affordable housing, what is affordable housing, Teddy? What are you concerned with? Do you mind me being a moderator?
You want to sit in such chairs?
I'm asking you.
So, look, I've been telling people this forever. You're not, the dream of affordable housing is dead in Massachusetts.
I agree.
You have certain building, fire codes, safety codes. You have certain construction costs, union rules, you know, wage rules, whatever. You're never going to build affordable housing in Massachusetts. I don't care what anybody says. You want affordable housing, you got to go where there's land and cheap labor, Wyoming, Zidaneos, wherever. So, I think this, I think it's a silly argument. That said, at some point, I get, I fear the state's going to jump in and start to mandate some of these things. And to me, ADUs might be the least of our concerns as a, as a community in Lowell. I think the elimination of single-family zoning, which we saw in Washington State, and you know that's, that effort's going to begin in Massachusetts.
So, I think you hit the nail on the head.
I almost feel we need to kind of like bring in what's acceptable, do something, and then hope, and then push back against the real big change that I think is coming for neighborhoods.
No, I agree. Obviously, the other, the other part of that is, you know, who manages all this? I mean, we're already 20,000 units behind for inspections right now. Who's going to regulate this? Anybody answer that question yet? They didn't, City Council didn't. I know they didn't. So, I just think you could have made a two-and-a-half-hour meeting into 15 minutes and brought everybody together for a subcommittee, had a special meeting, and have everybody speak as much as they want and come to a resolution. That's what I would have done.
Do you think we'll come to a resolution?
Not, well, now you're asking me as a politician, so.
So, I use this discussion.
And I don't mean to sidestep the issue, is that I just felt as though, you know, when you start bringing up amendments, the votes are there, and the votes are there.
Yes, the votes are, the votes are there, seven of four. My hunch is it passes, and then it becomes, you know, we'll see, and we'll probably revisit it again. Let me, let me shift to something that's related, though, because you talked about housing, affordable housing, the homelessness situation. Just over the weekend, we reported here at Inside Lowell, the Governor Healy's office was looking at the old St. John Dark School out in Pawtucketville for a shelter for migrants. And the governor's office reached out to me within 24 hours to say, "We've dropped that from consideration." But they confirmed that they were looking for it. So, I can also tell anybody watching this that they're looking at other sites in Lowell and surrounding communities. Governor's office themselves told me they have 5,500 families in that program right now. Most of them, many of them, as they'd worded it, but again, it's most, are migrant families. So, families with children that are coming into communities. And my information is there are thousands of those families coming into Massachusetts every month. So, we're kind of, the state's reached a desperation point.
We solved the problem today, but in another month, you're going to be back in the same situation.
Probably. So, how, is the City of Lowell too welcoming to some of these situations of the city? And there were a number of politicians who kind of reached out. And the St. John Dark School was easy, because, you know, folks could say, "Well, we want to bring that in as a school for the school kids of Lowell." So, that's an easy little deflection. Not going to be as easy with the next properties that the state starts kicking the tires on. But does the City of Lowell have, do we kind of have to get a handle on the problem we have now?
Well, you just, you just said it. Your last word was "now." How do we handle it now? But I'm worried about the future. And you're talking about the President of the United States allowing so many migrants into the country every day. And guess where they're going to come? They've been coming to Massachusetts. They're going to Boston. They're going to Worcester. They're going to Fall River. They're going to Brockton. They're coming to Lowell. They are. And that, and we're seeing it, you know? How the school's going to be able to handle it, all these families? We're, right now, we're bursting at the seams in some of these classrooms right now. But homelessness, as we see it right now, I kind of look at it as you're putting homelessness, drug addiction, mental illness, kind of all in the same pot, you know? So, when we discuss this, there better be a lot of cheers at the table, you know? From the federal government down. How do we handle this? Because it is, is bad. It's, you know, when my wife doesn't want to come downtown and walk, and walk around to a couple of, because she sees what she sees, and she's lived in Lowell her whole life, that's a problem. You know, that's, to me, is, we have to change that. We have to become the vibrant city that we did. So, I feel like I'm sidestepping your question a bit, because I don't have that answer, Teddy. And I'm not sure how many people have that answer right now. No, I welcome Governor Healy, that she's trying to put something forward, but are you going to put it on the shoulders of the larger cities of the state of Massachusetts? Of course. You know, I, how many, how many shelters are you going to go see in Trumpston and Westwood? I don't think there's going to be, I don't think there's going to be a lot there. So, now, you start looking at sites in Lowell, all right? How about the old district courthouse? Well, sure. Does the federal government want to give the state all a bunch of money and fix it up and make it into a shelter? Or the Superior Courthouse, or so be it, but.
But that creates a side effect of the problem, because we've spent the last year as a city, the council, fighting over the people who are living in tent cities and encampments. And Councillor Robinson put forward a motion to use one of the courthouses to provide some of these mental health and addiction services. Well, you're not going to put migrant families in, as you said, with the people suffering from mental health or addiction issues. So, we've just pushed that off. If you convert one of the courthouses or another building for migrant families.
I mean, if you're coming off the connect, and you're taking a left onto Gorham Street, do you really want to see that, the Superior Courthouse? Because it's going to look like the variety store that's just a little down the street, how it was before they cleared that out, which he did a good job.
Not if they're inside.
Good, well.
Like Tucksbury Hospital, or some of the old facilities we had in Lowell.
But you've brought up another good point. Some of the homeless, they don't want to be helped. So, what do you do, what do you do with those, with those, with those people? You know, listen, we want to help you with your drug addiction. We want to help you with your alcoholism. We want to help you. But when you flat out say, "Just leave me alone. I want to do what I want to do." Well, then, it becomes a safety issue, too. Because if you start seeing firearms and needles near schools, then, you know what? Everybody has an issue with that. Then you need to clear them out. I was all for cleaning out the encampments. We have to do it. And they did find a couple of firearms, needles everywhere. So, that's not what we want in the city Lowell. So, I'm not being heartless when I say that, but I don't have, Teddy Panos, I don't have an answer for you to say, "This is how we cure this." I think you got to bring everybody from Larvy Trehan and everybody, state reps, everybody to the table. What options do we have? Where are, what are the options we have? And still maintain the integrity of the city. Because right now, it's not looking great as somebody who's lived here his whole life, you know? I remember coming here downtown in the 80s, it was vibrant. Music, clubs, bars, everybody having a great time. I'm not seeing that anymore. That's, and that's all I got to say about that.
You asked who has the answers? The answer to that one is nobody. Nobody has them. If they had them, we'd know it. But there's some, some things, as you described, what do you do with people who just don't want to, you know, live under certain rules? And that, if those rules mean no drug use, no paraphernalia, whatever, you know, you can't jeopardize other people's safety, because somebody, you know, doesn't want to abide by those things. So, you almost either have to accept some level of it, or do your best to try to push it out of your community and say, "All right, somebody else deal with it, because we've dealt with it long enough."
I think it was Merrimack Street and John Street. I think the city administration installed new park benches. Guess what? They were all, they were all taken up with people sleeping on them.
TD Bank asked to take them out, because they were having a problem with their customers being harassed on Central Street, so.
And I talked to another, he goes, "He has to stand outside most of the night, just so they don't harass his customers by asking for money." That just should not happen.
One more topic I want to get to, before we talk about how folks get in touch with you, education. You've worked in the school system for decades now. You've got a pretty good look at it. There, there's, some seems to be an adversarial relationship over the last decade or so between the city side and the school side. Always a battle about, is the city doing enough to fund them? What's, what's the city responsible for? What are the schools responsible for? Given that you've worked on that other side, what could you see yourself doing as a councillor to bridge that divide?
Well, I will, I will, I will say this, that I think you have two individuals who I have high respect for, that are now the city manager, Tom Golden, and the interim superintendent, Liam Skinner. These are two very smart guys and love Lowell. And I think this is a good time to work together, to bring it together. There's always been the maintenance of effort, how much is going here, all this, and I get it. I haven't been ashamed about it, Teddy. I'm one who's, listen, the city council now has districts, right? Well, why don't we, why don't we have districts for schools? You know, call them neighborhood schools, call them district schools. I know it's a hot-button issue, but this is the way I feel, is that I still hang around with the same bunch of guys from Senneville that I grew up with. Neighborhoods are the fabric of the city. This is what Lowell was all about. And, and I really don't appreciate it. Well, we're not, still not diversified enough. Oh, we're diversified enough. And now, it's just to get the schools equitable. All the schools should be the same. "Oh, I like this school, because it's better than this school." I don't want to hear that. We got to get to that point, where if that's the case, then more resources, be it, you know, more tutors, more social workers at certain schools, so be it. But I have a problem with a, with little Johnny, who goes to the daily school and goes to school at 7:20 in the morning and gets out at 2:10. But his little, but Jimmy across the street goes to the Pine Arts, and he has to be at school at 8:40, and he gets out at 3:30. By the way, he has to take a bus, which takes an hour to get home. Now, it's 4:30. Some of these kids don't even get to hang around with their neighborhood friends. I think that's a shame. I seriously do.
All right, so you're the first, you're not the first person to bring up the, go back to neighborhood schools discussion again.
You really can't do it neighborhood by neighborhood, because there just isn't enough room in the schools to do that. So, you really have to massage it a little bit, and to make it kind of more of a district. But, but still, not crossing the bridges saves a lot. Not to mention, and the only reason why I'm talking about this, Teddy, is that I was thinking about bringing this up as a motion if I did get elected. Now, really, this doesn't come under the purview of the city council, but more the school committee. The, but more I thought about it, city's the one who gives the school bus transportation to the school department. They fund it. So, there is a horse in the race.
So, this is why I'm intrigued by you saying it, because you're somebody who's been involved with that a lot, because you've got to figure out how to get the kids on the buses to districts and whatnot. Does it work, Teddy? Tell me why you wouldn't run into the same problems that you ran into in the 80s, when the courts came in and said, "No, you got to, you got to go to new school system. You can't have neighborhood schools anymore." Why is it different in 2023?
Well, I think what you want to do, too, is you want to, you want the diversification in the schools to be as equal as possible. And I didn't answer that well. Not as equal as possible, but when I say diversified, I mean, are all of our students getting the same equal education as the other school? And I don't think in years past, that's happened. Because we've had some underperforming schools that we, we just weren't paying attention to, I think, you know? And that's past, past administrations. That's why I'm optimistic with Mr. Skinner and Mr. Golden come up with. Past administrations. That's why I'm optimistic with Mr. Skinner and Mr. Golden come up with. Where's the money gonna go? Where can we help out each other, you know? That to me is, you know, not to mention, you could save close to a million dollars in transportation. That wouldn't be a bad piece of change to pay a bunch of tutors, would it?
It's a creative way to come up with some funding, save it on busing. But okay, so you're, the reason the city had that federal order placed on it as Boston and other cities that had the. Deal with that was because the schools in the poorer neighborhoods were not performing as well and in many cases not getting the same funding. As the schools in the more affluent neighborhoods. And yet, what, how long ago was it? Ten, fifteen years ago that the Stockloos a school? And other schools in poorer neighborhoods, even though this federal order came in and said you can't have neighborhood schools anymore. The schools were still struggling and the resources were not equal. So you found your school department and your superintendents had the poor resources. Into those schools. Why does that keep happening?
The consent decree though, I mean, and not to belabor this, but. In nineteen eighty seven, there was a suit brought by Southeast Asian group that their children were not being educated. In the same uh. Equitable environments as others. They were going to the Boys Club. The YMCA was being used due to influx of families coming into the City of Lowell. So when George Sappasaris was superintendent, Tom Sweeney was the uh the attorney for the city. They negotiated that, all right, this is what we're gonna do. And that's when they ended up building the the new schools that are now thirty something years old. But and then in years progressed. Then the school committee says, okay, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna break it into zones. So. If you looked at the stock loss of school today, all right, and you look at the population that comes out of there. It's still eighty percent Southeast Asian. Why isn't there more of a mix? Because the way the consent decree was set up is by zone, not by school. So you may have more. Non Hispanic, white children in Pawtucket. Well, Pawtucket acre in the Highlands is a zone.
Ah, okay.
All right. So as long as that zone is plus or or minus fifteen percent of the population. Of that zone, you're in, you're fine. But. Once again, you could look at the Merklin School. Ninety percent is Southeast Asian and Hispanic. So there's a lot of disparity right now. I still see in the schools that needs to be. Changed.
And that situation can be changed with.
And I think by doing that. And I'm not saying to parents, uh, listen, all right, your child's a fifth grader at the daily. Well, he shouldn't be going to the daily. He should be going to the Robinson School. No, let let him finish out to the eighth grade. Let's grandfather these these students gradually and then gradually put them in the right schools. And I think that's the the right way to do it. I'm not, we're not here to, you know, especially somebody going into the eighth grade, you're gonna take them out of a middle school who's been in it for three years, you know. So you do, put some thought into this and do it correctly. And I think.
You put thought into it. Uh, because these are, these are things I've never heard in fifteen years of doing interviews with school committees, city council candidates. School superintendent.
And it's not, and it's not the school committees. Saying yes or no to this, Teddy. The administration has got to bring something forward. That says, okay, here, we think we got a, we got a plan here. And I don't think that a plan has been put forth. That the school committee can put serious thought into. I think that this administration can do that.
With you as a expert on the council.
I've got, I've got six or seven scenarios in the on my wall right now. I'm not sure if they're, they're so old, they probably not even work anymore, but.
How how do people find out more about your candidates, your campaign? You're gonna continue knocking doors, I would assume, so they probably will meet you in the neighborhood. You you're partial to lemonade or? Some for you and invite you in?
Uh, that's a, you know, you know me, so that's probably not a good question.
How do they find out more about your?
It's a, it's Facebook Committee to elect John Dakota. And um, that's how you follow me. I'm trying to stay active and knocking on doors in sections of the city that. People want to talk and and hot topic has been taxes. A lot of, lot of questions concerning taxes. My taxes have gone up, you know, close to nine percent in the last two years, you know, what's gonna happen? Well, you know, is is the high, are we paying for the high school now? I go, some of the, some of your taxes are being for that high school now. But you're gonna see more taxes coming up, you know, and. We're still two and a half years away from the new high school. So.
Is nine percent in two years too much?
It is when. Former administrations had zero percent and one percent and zero percent for three straight years. Yeah. Because now you're doing, you're just trying to catch up. So I I I think there needs to be a a hike every year to for inflation. That's basically I'm saying.
Kennedy's saying you're gonna vote to raise taxes.
Yeah, well, I. You can't see, I I don't know how you could even say zero, you know, cost of living goes up, you know, so, yeah. So do I see a constant two percent always coming through a call? I mean, yeah, I think so. And I think that's fair. They hit somebody at nine percent for two years. That's that's a good punch in the budget. And you know what? And that money goes into restaurants and that's your disposable income. And if you don't have that. Makes it tougher on everybody and it just streams downward.
All right. John Dakota, candidate for Lowell City Council, District Eight, the Upper Highlands. Appreciate you joining us today. Hope we get you in here for a debate. With your opponent, Ty Chum at some point in the fall. We'd love to have you guys go head to head on some of these and and other issues that pop up.
Teddy, I appreciate your time.
All right. Always good to see you, John. All right. Thank you to John Dakota and thank you to all of you for joining us as well. Here at Inside Lowell, as we like to say, if Lowell is your home. Inside Lowell is your place. Till next time. Stay safe, everybody.